Good evening. It is 6 o'clock and I am calling this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order. We have a quorum present. We're going to step right here into workshop and, Council, if you don't mind, we're going to move right into Item B. We'll come back to Item A, which is discussion of the agenda items and consent items. Item B, Presentation of Proposed Agreement with Russell Glenn Company for Development of The Hamptons, a commercial development of city-owned property at the southwest corner of I-35 and FM 407. Presenting will be Assistant City Manager Claire Powell, along with Terrence Maiden of the Russell Glenn Company, to give us a presentation.
Mayor and Council, we are excited here tonight to talk about a partnership that we have been working on for quite a while now. If you remember, we recently bought some property up at 407 and Summit, I-35, and this partnership has reached to the culmination of what the developer is contemplating calling it "The Hamptons." It's a commercial development on this corner. And I'll introduce the developer in just a second, once I give you the history on that. The Hamptons, if you guys don't know already, there's a T-shirt that's going around that says "Lake Louisville, The Hamptons of Dallas," so it's kind of tongue-in-cheek, but it's already got built-in marketing for that. And the other part of that is, as you'll see with a lot of the developers in this northern gateway, is they have a desire to tie into the lake and the lake project that's happening just nearby. So on the northern gateway, just a reminder to Council, all the different projects that are currently in the works, as well as to the public. So you probably can't read this very well, but in the blue, that is what Council is aware of, is Frontera. That is a master-planned community that is going to be 759 multifamily units, 201 town home units, and commercial along the freeway with a nice amenity area with a lake. You also have on the corner, which I'm not sure Council knows about, but we have gotten plans in for a gas monkey. What that is, is going to be an outdoor amusement facility. They're going to reuse that facility that's out there with the go-karts and make it even bigger and better, so that will really activate that area from a family entertainment standpoint. And then obviously, we have Heritage Trails, which is the multifamily, as well as town home development, as well as Nora that's going in. In the yellow, we have some future commercial that will tie in nicely with our site. And so that really left us with the site that was sitting right in the middle of all this opportunity. Now, the problem with that was that after COVID, we had a big spike in prices for industrial property. And so this property was already zoned, light industrial, and the developer, or the owner at the time, felt that it was in his best interest, even though he had previously taken part of the northern gateway plan and trying to make this a walkable urban village, decided that it might be in his best interest, to their best interests, to sell the property for industrial. The city felt this was the center of our northern gateway, and Council's direction to staff was, we need to do what we needed to do to make sure that we kept with the 2025 plan and achieve the vision. And so to do that, we had to put this property under contract, and we purchased it in May of 2021 for just a little bit over $9 million. Now, Council, of course, is not in the business of buying lots of land and flipping land, so the instruction to staff was, you better find us a great developer and who's willing to purchase this property in short order. And we believe we have found that developer who has the vision that the Council has set for this region. With that, I want to introduce you to Terrence Maiden. I wanted to read his bio for you, but he says he's got this covered, so he's going to go ahead and introduce himself.
Well, thank you, Claire, and to the mayor and council. I'm really excited about this wonderful opportunity. And to share a little bit more about Russell Glenn, our company, it's based here in Dallas. And I was actually introduced to the city of Lewisville because of the mall redevelopment that we're doing in Dallas, the former Redbird Mall. So the former economic director for the city of Lewisville reached out to me about your mall here in the city, and then I was introduced to this opportunity. Again, Russell Glenn, we're based in Dallas. I've been in the development industry for 21 years. I actually launched Russell Glenn three years ago in hopes of building really impact projects across the U.S., and we're doing a lot in the city of Dallas, and we see Lewisville as a great opportunity for us. Again, we're really focused on more impact projects. Most of our projects that are underway or that we've developed have been more mixed-use or master-planned communities, also repurposing malls across the country. I grew up here in Dallas, attended TCU, earned a football scholarship there, as I mentioned earlier. I've been in the development industry for roughly 21 years. So what we do, our company has invested over $750 million in commercial projects over our tenure. We also have completed 125 projects. Our strategy is built on really three things. It's really centered around people, places, and partners. And so that's kind of how we're building our platform as a company and organization. Some of the projects that we have completed that are underway is one I mentioned earlier, the shops at Redbird, which is a $200 million redevelopment of the former Southwest Center Mall in Dallas. Glen Oaks Crossing, which is a Walmart anchor center in Dallas. The Canyon is a 211 master-planned mixed-use development that consists of hotel, residential, restaurants, and retail. The Alexon West Dallas was done in partnership with Trammell Crow. It's an urban mixed-use development. Center City is in the city of DeSoto. It's a Tom Thumb anchor center with some quick-service restaurants. Richardson Square is a mall redevelopment in the city of Richardson that's anchored by Target. Eldorado Plaza is located in the McKinney Market. It's anchored by Trader Joe's and a couple of select service hotels. Red Oak Crossing is a Walmart anchor development in the city of Red Oak. A couple more here, and then we'll move on to the plan for Lewisville. The shops at Waterview Park is in Dunkinville. It's a mixed-use development with urban residential and LA Fitness and restaurants and retail. And Hatchet Station is a Parkland Medical Center anchored building. We were partners with Matthew Southwest on the Omni Hotel project in the city of Dallas. And also, in my previous role, I was director of real estate for Panera Bread and Piata Restaurants.
So we have structured a purchase agreement for this property. So as Council had directed, the desire was for us to find a developer who was qualified, who met the vision of Council, and we'll go over what Terrence's vision for this property is and get feedback from Council. But basically, the idea is, we will allow the developer to get all the entitlements, along with the city, for the next 365 days. He would have two extensions, 60-day extensions. He would have to purchase those extensions. And then he does have to pay earnest money on the front end. But prior to closing, the city and developer are going to work together to finalize a master plan, which you'll see the draft right now, and we'll get your feedback today. And then the city will rezone the property to a planned development district zoning. That will lock in all of those entitlements, but ensure that it's going to be built exactly the way we want it to be built. And then the developer, while the city is responsible for hiring the planning team, the architectural team to come up with the layout, and you'll see that we've already, under Donna's signature authority, we've hired GFF, and they've done work for both of us on this project going forward. But Terrence's company would pay for the traffic impact analysis to make sure that they have adequate access to the site from 407. And then circulation plan, market project, and this entire time, he's already started marketing for tenants and has gotten quite a few bites currently, and he can talk about a little bit of those. And then both parties would agree to negotiate in good faith for future economic development incentives, if it is necessary. So he's purchasing the property for exactly the amount that we bought the property for, the fair market value. So the city's getting back what they put into it, and then we would look at this as an economic development agreement, if that's needed for ultimately to get the tenants in that we're looking for. But that I'll give it to you.
All right. So The Hamptons, I'm really excited about this project. I think it's going to be a great asset for the city of Lewisville. What we, with our strategy, what we wanted to do was build off some of the momentum that's already happening there, which Claire mentioned with Frontera, also the Nora project that's right adjacent to this corner. Some of the other amenities that we envision here are quality restaurants, a place where families can come out, gather, and spend time, and shop, and dine. As we mentioned earlier, we did hire GFF. I've worked with them on a number of projects, and the city was very comfortable with GFF to help master-plan the property. There's a lot of things that we had to take into consideration, so this site plan is probably our fifth edition of it. We made a lot of changes, because there's a few things that we discovered that was going to be really important. The desire to have a grocery store was one, so we needed to provide adequate parking for a grocery store. The other thing that we saw a pretty good opportunity for was healthcare. There is only medical city that's here in the city, so I've worked with a number of different healthcare systems, and I think this is a viable option to bring in maybe more quality healthcare. And then a hotel and restaurants. And so the way we master-planned this was to create a cluster of restaurants around what we're calling this green lawn, which is going to be heavily programmed for events for the community. These restaurants would be more chef-driven concepts that you can go out and dine on a Friday, dine at on a Friday evening. And then we have a mix of some quick-service restaurants that are located a little bit closer to Justin Road. And so what you see in the blue box is a two-level office building that could be catered just for office or medical. The purple building is a proposed select or limited-service hotel. And then you see the anchor, it could be a potential grocery store, and then you can see where all the restaurants are located. This rendering here gives you a vision of the green space that I was referencing earlier, where it could be heavily programmed with maybe evening concerts, a place where people can hang out and dine, and then you have patios facing back into that area. Also, what we like about the way the buildings are positioned there, it creates a buffer between the interstate and that green space. And the way the green space is located from the site plan, it connects to the hotel, can walk out easily, as well as if you're in the office, and if you're at the grocery store, you can walk across the parking lot to get there. We had to create a buffer on the corner. There's an easement here that you can build on, so we envisioned that being a really nice green space with some signage that markets the project.
So you want to talk any about this?
Yeah, these are just some ideas. We are thinking about adult swings that's becoming more popular for people to come out and gather. We have the lawn at Redbird, which we're doing a lot of different programming, whereas yoga in the evening, or some fun activities where kids and adults can come out and have fun and enjoy it.
Okay. With that, I also wanted to go back to the master plan and just mention to Council. So this is still a work in progress. One thing that Terrence and I were just talking about beforehand is, you know, at the upper left-hand corner, that is a sit-down restaurant, and there's two drive-throughs right in the middle next to them, really putting the drive-through on that hard corner, but then taking that sit-down and really buffering that street so that it's interacting with the drive that's coming in, so it's lined up with those other restaurants, and then probably pushing in some of the restaurants that are over by the interstate on the right-hand side, pulling them in a little bit too, really trying to create that sense of place along the street line. So this is still a work in progress. This master plan, we'll come back to Council for approval once we're in a pretty good place and feel like it's pretty stable, and it will become the exhibit to our planned development district. But we did want to get input from Council, so I'll leave this up here. I can talk next steps after we see if there's any input from Council on any of the programming or uses that are out there.
I have a, well, I have a question and a comment. So the, am I understanding correctly that the darker-colored pavement, is that pedestrian-only? Is that, am I reading that right?
The one that's in the center?
Yeah, around the pavilion and the park area.
That's the green space that we were showing on the rendering. So this is that area here.
Okay, but it looks like there's darker-colored pavement around it.
Yeah, that's paving to slow down traffic.
Okay, so that is still vehicular paving?
Vehicular.
Okay, okay. So what I think would be really cool is if you could make some type of pedestrian plaza in there that surrounds that park. I think that would be really, really neat. The other thing that, I love the idea of the swings. I think the rendering is beautiful. I'm really excited about this development. One thing I wanted to, the input that I just wanted to give, was that I think it's going to be really important for this development to interact with the neighboring developments, particularly because we're going to have so much multifamily and higher-density residential surrounding it, which is good for the businesses anyway. I would love to see some pedestrian access points between, particularly this one that's just right next to it, and I don't know, there's a little something there, I can't tell.
Yeah, we're trying to connect there. You can see where the drives are coming across.
Yes.
Those are a point of connection, and then we're trying to do wider sidewalks there too, just for pedestrian connection.
Yeah, I was going to say also, with that connect, the benefit to that is, the idea is ultimately that Williamson Track that's coming down, that's a future commercial, will just be an extension of this. So if we actually make that connection work right, that just becomes an extension and then ties everything in together.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and I think, I mean, I've talked about this quite a bit with staff before. You know, I don't like to have the barriers between the developments. This is going to be, you know, all these people that are living over here are going to be shopping in this grocery store, and they're going to be eating at these restaurants. So if there is a way that we can provide a safe pedestrian connection for them to get there without having to get in their car, since it's so close, I think that would be really awesome.
Great point.
I just have, I have a question. What is your definition of limited-service hotel?
It really depends on the brand. So the brand of hotels that our company has worked with the most has been Marriott, Hilton, and Hyatt. So if you think about the Marriott brands, it'd be like on the courtyard side, or the loft?
I have some concerns about that, because I know what has happened with some of our And that concerns me. I just want it to be something that is high-quality and is sustainable, high-quality, and doesn't end up in an extended-stay situation.
Yeah, I would say one of the hotel groups that we have had early conversations with is Atlantic Hotel Group, and they typically own and manage their hotel long-term, so they keep the quality there. A lot of times when hotels sort of go downward, it's because the management company is not involved.
Councilwoman Kate, I also wanted to point out that extended-stay hotels actually require now, they didn't use to, but require an SUP, separate and apart. So he would have to meet all of our, we have adopted more recently a higher-end hotel standard, so his project would have to meet those as well. But I, we understand what you're saying, and our planned development district will make sure to take care of that as well.
All right. And Kristin asked some of my other questions already. Yeah, I would love to see, well, that's up over there, isn't it, Donna? It's north of all of this.
Yep.
So there would be no, I'm good.
Councilwoman, remember? Mayor?
Yeah, a couple comments. First of all, I'm very excited about this project. This is, I live near here, this is in my five-minute bubble, so I'm very excited about this. First of all, just a quick question, other than the obvious, where did the name The Hamptons come from? Because I'm always interested in the history of these names.
Well, it's brought up originally by our architect group, and they reference it as The Hamptons of Dallas. Lewisville been called that, and so I kind of embraced that name. We're not married to it, it's just kind of a name we've been working with at this point.
Well, I think it's a hoo. I think obviously everybody knows that name, so it's an interesting name. Picking back on what Council member Kate said, I do think a hotel is needed in this area. I can't tell you how many times we've had people in town, and there really is nothing right in this general area for people to stay at, so I do think this would be a good location. As far as your anchor, there's been a lot of commentary in the past when Albertson's went out about Trader Joe's, so I don't know if you've got a, I know there's been a lot of clamoring about having Trader Joe's.
Yeah, we will talk to all the different grocery stores, from Trader Joe's to Sprouts to ATB to Kroger, Tom Thumb. We've worked with all the different grocery stores.
Okay. And I would challenge you too, to get, if you would, get creative with the restaurants, you know. I look at some of the other ones that have done developments like this, and I'm always frustrated with the restaurants that they choose in some of these developments. So I think you need to get some more unique-type restaurants at this place. If you're going to call it The Hamptons, it better live up to The Hamptons.
Yeah.
Understood.
Councilman Troyer? Anything to add?
I like, excuse me, I like it, and I can't talk, so.
Fair enough. We'll let you do it in writing. So, Mr. Maiden, thank you so much for reaching out. I've followed the Redbird project, and that is an amazing collaboration that you've got going on down there, and I really appreciate your insight into creating spaces for neighborhoods to exist and not just creating spaces for money to exchange hands. I think that's a really amazing thing. The concept of chef-driven restaurants, I think hopefully will help address the concern. I know I had the opportunity to go down to Roots over in Farmer's Branch here a couple weeks ago, and it was an amazing experience, and that's the kind of thing I hope we can create here. I think you can get some synergy going on with the other developments in the area. I don't have any concerns at this point, than, other than what's been brought up. I know our staff has really been looking at creating those types of linkages, but we'll work well with you. So I appreciate you bringing this. I think in general, everybody here is happy with this for moving forward. What more do you need from us?
Okay, next steps will be, we will bring back the purchase contract with Mr. Maiden's company, and the master plan more finalized with taking into consideration your input, and we look forward to that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Item C, Overview of the Lake Park Master Plan. I have our Director of Parks and Recreation, Stacy Anaya, conducting the presentation for us.
I'm going to have Lenny Hughes with Half Associates join me for all the important stuff.
Welcome back, Mr. Hughes.
Good evening.
So in November of 2019, we signed a PSA with Half Associates to start our Lake Park Master Plan and help us kind of get going on how we would spend the $7.7 million we had scheduled in the bond program to improve the day use in RV campground at Lake Park. And then kind of COVID hit a little bit and slowed us down, and then we were able to get back into the swing back in last November, late fall, and get some public input and start moving on that. And then you'll remember, we kind of punched the brakes a little bit, because we thought we were going to include the Marina in this plan. But we had already gone through some significant public input and had started working towards our concept. And what we really wanted to do is with Half, one is, what's great about them, aside from, you know, Lenny's fun to work with, is they help develop the development guidelines for any property along Lewisville Lake. So they're very familiar with what the Corps wants from us. But also had a vision of what the entire park system is. If you'll remember, Lake Park once was our all-in-one park. It was everything we needed for recreation in the community. And then as we grew, other parks developed and filled those needs for ball fields or open space. And I liken Lake Park to a house built in the 1950s that was added on in the '70s. It was added on in the '80s. It was added on in the '90s, and they all reflect that specific style, and there's really been no master plan for the whole park itself, which has kind of led to issues with how we get into the park, how people use the park. You know, we've got Little League and leagues coming for use there right at the main entry point, and that kind of bogs up how people get into the park for boating or just for day use. There's also no real entry to Lake Park. You don't really know you've arrived to this fantastic asset. And so we brought Lenny and his team on to help us kind of guide through that. By the time that we had gotten through some of our public input and started motionating some of our concepts and we pumped the brakes, we still had a lot to go on for what we could re-envision Lake Park day use and RV campground. So we wanted to go ahead and bring that forward to you, tell you what we've heard, and kind of give you what that concept planned as is for that area of the park, and talk a little bit of the issues we'll be facing as we develop that park. And then I'll talk to you a little bit how we plan to integrate the Marina and fishing barge into the process.
All right. Thank you, Stacy, and good evening, Mayor and City Council for the city of Lewisville. Again, my name is Lenny Hughes, the Regional Director of Landscape Architecture and Planning of Half Associates. And so as Stacy had mentioned, we started this project off in November of 2020, where we had a significant amount of public engagement and input. We met with city staff, city management. We've also had several stakeholder meetings that included the Frisbee Golf Organization, members from the cricket club. Also, we met with Arcus Golf, the Army Corps of Engineers. We've also had several stakeholder meetings with some of the other vendors that would operate and manage rentals and sales of boats, as well as some of the sea dews and other watercraft that's out there on Lake Louisville. We've also had an opportunity to provide an online survey, where we've received over 200 responses from citizens, as well as had meetings with some of the adjacent neighbors, the people that live in and around the Lake Park area. And so we got quite a bit of a significant input. And so some of the things that we've heard is that, you know, they want Lake Park to have lake access during high-water events. And so if you recall back in 2015 and subsequent years afterwards, Lake Park has been unusable. And so one of the things we looked at is, where is that line of flood events, flood impacts? Are there ways to maybe relocate the road to provide better access? Some of the things we've heard also was looking at dual points of access to the park. There's such a great and magnificent views as you drive down Lake Park Road and be able to see the lake itself. And so having those points of access is going to be key throughout the planning process. And talking with staff, you know, there's some existing ball fields out there that felt it was really important that we retain the overall character of the site and keep as many of the ball fields and keep all the soccer fields there. But there were two, the larger adult softball fields that were not in high, high use. And so we saw this opportunity to maybe relocate those fields to other parts in the city, and maybe capture that land and use that land for potential RV or camping opportunities there for Lake Park. I even talked with the cricket organization. There's only one field out there, but during these, again, these high sustained rain events, those fields were flooded. They were open to the opportunity to relocate those fields elsewhere and maybe giving up that land for potential mitigation and also revegetation, having nature areas for walking trails within that area near the dam. Then also, we talked with Arcus Golf, and so they have an 18-hole golf course area, as well as a nine-hole area that's on the west side of Mill Street. They were also open to the opportunity to maybe also open to the opportunity to maybe reconfigure, consolidate some of their uses there on the golf courses. And instead of having two clubhouses, maybe consolidate into one clubhouse, making a more higher and better and efficient use for their staffing, as well as management and operations of their facilities. And then even talking with the Corps and, you know, having them as a strong partner, not only in the overall approval process, but also looking at opportunities to maybe partner with them on some of their lands that's not being used currently for their facilities. And so the long-term goal is to look at how to provide access. If you go back to, you know, with COVID and even back into the years of 2005 to 2008, when we had high gas prices across the nation, you know, people were looking at ways to travel closely. And so, and when we were doing the earlier master plan for the Army Corps, we felt that Lake Park as one of those facilities that could provide a great amenity, not only for the city of Lewisville, but also for the metroplexes. That's one of these major lake destinations here within the region. And so throughout the process, we developed several concepts and we've met and presented those to staff and also to the Corps. And then finally, we ended up with one preferred concept, which is Concept A. And so this looks at the area itself, having two points of access, one off Lake Park Road, which comes into the...let's see if I have my mouse here. So this is the main point of access into the park itself. The other secondary park access is where we would have it right now currently. One of the key things, and when we're looking at camping, is to provide areas for high-quality to mid-quality cabins for rentals, also opportunities to maybe enhance the existing RV camping that's out there right now, and providing better roadway access and making it more accessible during these high rain events. And so we're looking at removing that road to where now, instead of the park being closed during these rain events, that now remains open. Other areas of interest is looking at this kind of this high point here, to make this more of an active day use for like a destination water park or destination playground. But also in the background is having some type of large sand volleyball court area where you can have competitions and really having a destination there that really fulfills all of these day use activities for people wanting to use the Lake Park. And the fishermen, we don't want to forget about the fishermen and fisherwomen. This point right here has a lot of tremendous access for fishing. We see people fishing out there on a daily basis. And so having opportunities to provide fishing piers, to provide better access to the water out there for catching fish. And then on the backside of that, we would have two areas for the swim beach. Make sure that it is roped off, providing safe access for the swimmers and having buoys out there telling the people that are in boats, hey, that you're becoming into this more pedestrian and swimmer area and to really slow down and take caution there within the zone. And so one of the key things here that along this area on the, we're calling this the North Shore. And so this area is currently where the Disc Golf plays golf in those areas. And, you know, a little bit of history that this is like number one or number two ranked courses in the nation because of the views and access there. But in talking with the folks at Disc Golf, they're actually open to maybe relocating those holes to other parts of the park, but they just want to do it one time. And so whatever plan that we come up with, make sure that we are working with them and redeveloping their Disc Golf holes, but still providing this lake access. By doing this, this opens up prime opportunity in real estate for cabins. And so from a cabin rental standpoint, you're able to maybe list these at a higher price and provide, get a higher return on investments for those areas there. This also has really good access from the road. And then we've got this area, I don't know if you guys have walked out here or not on this peninsula. It's a very pristine look and walk. It kind of has this little overlooked area on the lake. But one of the things we discovered is it's also receiving a lot of erosion because of the wave impacts and also some of the flooding that's happened and occurred over the years. But we felt that this is an opportunity to create glamping, which is this glorified opportunity to present some unique camping opportunities, such as yurts and other types of things there within that zone.
I was reading that correctly. Like, what is that word?
Yurts.
Oh, it's yurts. You got it.
Yes, yurts. And so we don't really want to heavily program the area. And so we want to make this a little bit more specialized. And so anywhere from four to six unique yurts or glamping opportunities, that would be access not by car, but also maybe by cart. And so you would kind of walk up this trail or take a cart up this trail. And so this becomes this unique camping experience out there on that peninsula. And so we have some really good neighbors with the, and talk with Arcus Golf. And so we've looked at and actually presented this concept to them. And they were open and favorable to the relocation and consolidation of some of their holes. And so instead of having an 18 and a nine, we have one consolidated 18-hole golf course. And instead of having two areas for the clubhouse, we're looking at relocating that clubhouse somewhere potentially on this southwest corner of Mill Street and Lake Park, or maybe even looking at opportunities to maybe move it on that north, I'm sorry, that southeast corner there. And so those are things that we've talked with Arcus Golf and they're open to, for that type of reconfiguration of those golf holes there. And so some of the other key things, you know, access to the fishing barge, you know, that's been always a kind of a subject that we want to make sure that we're good neighbors there, but also providing access to those areas. And one of the things that we heard from the general public, the neighbors there, that they would like to have some type of, maybe a neighborhood park that provides a unique buffer between all the activities that would happen there, also a buffer between the reconfigured Frisbee Golf area. And so, you know, by being a good neighbor, being a good partner, looking at ways to provide access into Lake Park off of Sandy Beach Road, then maybe having this area for parking for the Disc Golf users, but also having some type of controlled access here at Turtle Trail and also having controlled access here at Lake Park Road there. And so this is the kind of the general bubble diagram that we've kind of developed at this point. Provides two points of access, provides kind of a roadway that is accessible during these high rain events, but also ways to have rental and operational functional activities during these long sustained rain events here on Lake Lewisville. And so just diving deeper, again, these are just the concepts that we presented to Arcus Golf, where we looked at the reconfiguration of the golf course. One of the big things that we have here is that if you look on the eastern side of Lake Park, you've got this driving range. And so then the driving range and talk with them could be positioned over here on the west side of the park, again, with the netting and screening that would happen there. But also, they're really interested in coming in with a very kind of aggressive tree planting program and ways to help bring in attractors for birds as well as butterflies within the zone. And so they're really trying to be environmentally conscious with any type of plantings or vegetation that would happen and occur on the redeveloped golf course. They're actually doing this in other parts of the country and they want to take that same platform and apply that here on Lake Park. Option two, again, just a little bit different configuration of the area itself, again, looking at the holes and those other potential realignments there. So before I go on, move on to the erosion control, are there any questions on the overall concept plan?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
See the day use right east of the premium cabins that's southeast of the fishing barge? Between the boat launch?
Right there.
Here, yes.
Could you do a pier there or all the, so all the piers aren't all the way over here?
Absolutely. You know, we could put a fishing pier there. I think right now they would have some type of courtesy dock typically at the boat launch. I actually do have seen people fishing there on those big boulders out there. And so by all means, we could look at placing some type of...
Because I would, I mean, it would be nice that when I stay at one of these premium yurts, that, that there's a pier somewhere close.
Absolutely. And those are great opportunities for, you know, for photo taking, picture taking, and also for fishing.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So moving on to part two of our exercise, part of this is also to look at shoreline erosion. And so I don't know if you guys have been out there within the last couple of years, there's been a significant amount of shoreline erosion that's happened and occurred on, at Lake Park. A lot of this is due to the increased level water level that happened in 1998. The lake was raised about seven feet. Again, this is all due to the Corps' mission of release flood control, as well as a water source for the region. Last thing is recreation. So, you know, we want to make sure that we're, again, being good neighbors with the Corps and working within their guidelines. But also, since then, there's been quite a bit of significant boats and marinas that's happened and occurred over time. And so that, this has caused a lot of wave action. If you have these high sustained rain events, instead of waters up higher, and so you're starting to see a lot of that banks and erosion starting to eat away during these long sustained events. Even some of the vegetation along the shoreline has started to erode away because of those rain events there. So as we went through this process, we not only looked at, you know, where development may occur from the concept plan, but also what are the areas of high conflict areas? And we started to identify those on Lake Park. And so we've identified areas that's in red, the magenta, green, blue, and black. But we also identified some areas that are, that really need some significant attention because of the erosion that's happening there. And these are really at areas that were water washing area right now at the boat launch. Water is washing away at some of the road areas, at some of the higher, the more inland areas of the lake, as well as areas for that's losing some of the vegetation there. And so as we go around the peninsula, we've got some photos that can identify what that erosion looks like. And so this is on that northeast shore of the peninsula here. And so this photo one kind of shows where that water during these high events have certainly eroded, as well as on the backside, you're not seeing any significant erosion because it's all protected from the land masses there. We felt that was important when we look at this, to provide some type of erosion to protect this area, but also look at some type of mitigation here to preserve and protect those trees, to reduce that wave impact that's happening within that location. Another area here, and so one example of what could occur there is having rip ramp boulders. We've seen this in other areas of other projects we've worked on. And the key thing that we've heard is that, you know, we don't just want to have a gray rock or boulder, but let's have something that's more in tune or in line with some of the natural colors that's happening around the shoreline there at Lake Lewisville. And so having this earth tone, the browns, the reds, the tans, that really would blend in well with the, some of the natural stone that's there on the lake. As we move further, this is the area where near the Disc Golf. And this has seen a lot of impact during, you know, since COVID, people are going out there. There's been some conflicts with the golfers and people just wanting to go out there and fish and just sit. And so creating opportunities when we developed a mash plan, and now just imagine there's cabins there that kind of backs up to the lake. And we were coming in there and creating some terrace boulders and steps so now they can have access down to the water. And so they can kind of sit peacefully and enjoy, you know, an evening sunset there at the lake. As we move further east, this is the area in and around the existing boat ramp and there's, well, is the fishing pier. This has received a lot of, you know, protection over the years. And we just want to make sure that we are reinforcing this area and providing that adequate protection there along that shoreline. To me, this is one of the areas that gets the most impact. You get a lot of wave impact, especially during the winter months here. And so we want to make sure that we are reinforcing that edge there during, for protection. And so one of the things we talked about, you know, how can we provide kind of a green approach and have some type of concrete mats or blocks that encourages vegetation? So it's not just a harsh rocky environment. Now it's more of a kind of a green approach there. Further east of that, of the actual boat launch, this area is receiving a lot of, again, wave action because it's on the point. And, you know, we're also losing a lot of valuable real estate and trees here along the edge. And so again, applying that same type of measure there. One of the things we talked about is maybe having some type of sheet piling, but that provides that protective edge. And so that's one thing that we're going to talk with the Corps. You know, is this the appropriate measure here to be able to protect that edge? And what have other lakes done around the region that's kind of shown and proven this out over time there? And this image was actually taken at Cedar Creek Lake, and I was actually out there fishing, so I took it and that'll be a good example there. So here, we're moving further back around the edge. Again, this is the other boat launch area. Again, this is where the fishing piers would be on that north and eastern edge, again, continuing to provide some type of protection there. This is the area that you may have some of those boulders and rocks there because this is getting some of the heaviest impact, but also make sure that we are having that same palette of color for the rock material within that location. And this gets more on the eastern edge towards the dam, and again, having those areas of protection there. And then finally, the area that is just north of the cricket fields, make sure that we're, again, providing that same level of protection throughout the after plan. And so this is kind of our preliminary look of what that would look like. And all this is dependent upon, you know, what direction we go with the overall kind of concept plan. And so once we get further input back from staff, further input back from council, we can now define, well, which type of application works best depending on the potential use or zone for the park. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Stacy to talk about the fishing barge and marina.
Mayor, do you need to go through the agenda?
Yeah, I was going to ask you if I could just pause for just a second. We're going to go back to Item A, just to see what we've got for time here.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to also take you into closed, take you all into closed session pursuant to Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney regarding this item, the Lake Park Master Plan.
Okay. So we've got two things that are fighting for our last 10 minutes. Let's do this. Let's go ahead and just look at the agenda briefly, folks. I've been requested to take Item Three off of consent due to a need to recuse by Councilmember Cade. Other than that, any other questions on the consent agenda? Anything on the public hearing? Anything on our regular hearing, Item H, eight?
I'll be recusing on Item 11.
On Item 11, thank you. Item 12? 13? I've got no further comments. We will go ahead and go into closed session at the request of our city attorney. All right, let's do that.
As you can see, we face some considerable erosion problems that we also need to address as we move through finalizing the concept plan. But we also need to talk about how we're going to approach the fishing barge and the marina area and integrate that into the plan. You know, we've got some issues at both sites with compliance with the United States Army Corps of Engineers. You know, we've got some issues at both sites with compliance with the United States Army Corps of Engineers out grant management processes and guidelines that we need to address, like flotation of biases, ADA accessibility, and just space to move around. And so we really need to look at that. And I think as we, we're going to issue an RFQ to find some developers to help us do that and bring those places into their plastic glory because they're both very, very vital to Lake Park. And remember, Lake Park is all of that. It's not just the day use area, it extends north all the way to Tower Bay. And so making sure that we come up with a plan that works seamlessly is going to be important for us. And I think finding a developer who can help us get us there is going to be important. So our next steps are to, if you're comfortable, we're going to be moving forward with defining the concept plan that we showed you today, finding a way to integrate the marina and fishing barge into what that ultimate plan will be, and work with the United States Army Corps of Engineers to approve the plan. Because remember, that will be the basis for our lease extension for 2025. We have to have this done in order to negotiate that lease agreement.
Right.
Just things to remember is that we issued the $7.7 million tranche for the bonds that should address the Lake Park day use and RV campground this year. So we'll need to start moving towards solidifying this plan, getting construction documents, and spending that money in accordance with the timeline so that we don't compromise our bond rating. And erosion issues are going to be a big thing that we need to address because we've got to protect that base asset. It's maybe not the sexiest of things in the plan, but where are some of the most important? And we really need to work together to identify the resources to get us towards the realization of the plan. You know, we've got future bond initiatives where we said that we wouldn't go out for park stuff, but we might look at streets and trails and those. And so that will be a big component of this. And then we could probably integrate it into the 4B capital plan. It is not there right now. So we'll need to talk about what those priorities are. And I think as we work our way through our master plan, the overall master plan, we can do that. We also have some opportunities for grant and revenue opportunities. For instance, when I was in Corpus Christi, one of the ways that we made improvements to our golf course was over a course of years, we added a dollar to each round and we banked it until we could then put it back into improvement. So those are things that we might be able to talk about employing here to help us get to seeing this as a reality.
Great. Counsel, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm a huge user of the fishing barge. And having grown up here and been here for over 50 years, and I take my grant, there are some major issues. And there's aesthetic, things have just been left to run down. And there's some major safety issues. But that I'm adamant about us having a fishing barge, but it needs to come into compliance. And it can be a huge, huge asset to Lewisville. And we need it to come into the 21st century.
Yes, ma'am.
Other comments?
I have a question. Is the Corps planning on raising the lake level again? Because I know we have other lakes that they're putting in and dams.
Not that we're aware of at this point.
Because I would make sure of that, so whatever you build up for, you're building up for the future. Because I think there's going to be changes.
It's not been indicated in any of the plans they have sent us.
Okay.
One thing I would add, Counsel, and Stacy really already mentioned it. So when we were putting together the bond program back in 2014, you didn't have these erosion issues.
Right.
So that's all new. And so that may eat up quite a bit of that $7.7 million. We really don't have an estimate for you now.
I think it really started in 2015 when I got to kayak and fish, for some great catfish, by the way, on the golf course.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Well, in case they didn't mention it, I would probably plan for the possibility of it because they may not know, be connecting all the dots. But we don't want to be right back where we are now.
Right.
Seven, 10 years from now.
Other comments?
Is there any areas figured for, like, you know, we had the 50th pop festival thing out. There's any area that's set aside for possible use like that?
So I think you saw in the middle of it, there was an amenity area that we could use as flex space for that. And so, of course, if we reclaim some of the areas, like where the golf course is, we'll have some flexibility. And remember, this is just a concept plan. As we get more detailed into looking at topography and how we'll need to, you know, make sure that road's not in the flood plain for future adjustments there, those things will fed up. But we are keeping that in as a programmatic possibility.
So Counsel, the concept plan would be attached to the RFQ. But Stacy and I have worked on that and we've got some language. A developer could bring a different concept to us for you to consider. So, you know, your RVs could, RV campsite could actually move closer to the existing marina. There's different things that could happen. I don't want you to think that we're putting developers in a box, but I think it's important that they see this concept plan.
So this is a fluid, working plan?
Yes, ma'am.
I think, I think the amenities that are listed here make a lot of sense for the space. I love that we've got tent camping a little bit closer to the water. I just think of it from our scouts and our scout groups. I think there's a lot more opportunity in this kind of a configuration. I am a little concerned about Mill Street. If we're going to be dropping that second entrance, that northern part of Mill Street, we really need to make sure we're doing a good job on the build out and reconstruction of that. We all know it's needed at some point, so.
If it is working on that, Mayor.
Yeah, we should be bidding the Mill Street project by the first part of next year.
Great, that's good news. I'm sure that a lot of the neighbors up there will be happy to hear that as well. So, thank you, guys. Anything else to add?
Thank you.
All right, really appreciate the overview, thank you. All right, and with that, it is 7:03. I'm going to call the regular session of the Lewisville City Council to order and announce that we have a quorum. We have the invocation by Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Please join me in a moment of contemplation. Amen.
Counselor Troyer, do you want to lead us in the pledges or?
I will. Please join me in the pledges to the U.S. and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, we are awaiting an individual for our closed session. So we're going to go ahead and move into the public hearing, item E. One, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for a contractor's yard with more than 10% outside storage on a 6.58 acre tract of land out of the JW King survey, abstract number 695, and the JH Haven survey, abstract number 541, located on the east side of South Railroad Street, approximately 1,300 feet south of State Highway 121 Business, zone heavy industrial district, as requested by Stephen Holmeyer, Holmeyer Engineering Incorporated, on behalf of David Jones, 121 Railroad Avenue LLC, the property owner, case number 21-08-6-SUP. John Burns Construction is an existing business located at 665 East Main Street, directly southwest of the Old Town DCTA Station. The property owner plans to relocate their business out of Lewisville's transit oriented development and area to Railroad Street. The use as a contractor's yard with more than 10% outside storage requires the approval of a special use permit per Lewisville zoning regulations. A special use permit for this use was approved on February 1st, 2021. The applicant has modified the lot and site layout and is requesting approval of a new SUP reflecting new configuration and area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 6 to nothing on September 21st, 2021, and is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Available for questions is Mr. Lutke, our planning director. If there are no questions, I will entertain a motion to close, oh, wait, and sorry. We do have Mr. Stephen Holmeyer here. He does not wish to speak, but is available for any questions. If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Counsel, if you would please vote to close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed with a vote of five to nothing. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion, second. City Attorney, if you would please read the caption.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for a contractor's yard with more than 10% outside storage on approximately 6.5 acres legally described as a portion of land out of the JW King survey, abstract number 695, and the JH Haven survey, abstract number 541, located on the east side of South Railroad Street, approximately 1,300 feet south of State Highway 121 Business and zone heavy industrial district, providing for repealer severability penalty and effective date and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Thank you, Mr. Holmeyer, for being here for questions, appreciate you. All right. Next up, Visitor Citizens Forum, item F. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have one E comment to read into the record. This is from JL Gillam. The police department sworn staff has confirmed we have multiple drug houses in the Timberbrook neighborhood. We have an ongoing issue with theft and various other crimes due to the residents and visitors of these homes. The residents of Red Wing have requested for the temporary mailboxes to secure it in a manner to avoid theft. City engineering staff have refused to address this issue and have continued to provide their usual book of excuses. That is the end of that E comment. City Secretary, do we have any other?
No, sir, we do not.
All right. That'll be the end of our Visitor Citizens Forum. Item G, consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or E comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I do have that Councilmember Cade has asked that consent item three be pulled so that she can vote on the remainder of the consent agenda. Are there any other requests?
Do I need to move to have that done?
No, it just gets moved and then we move to approve. Right? I just have to pull it, right?
You just have to pull it.
Yeah, we're pulling item three. All right. I just need a motion to approve the consent agenda without item three.
Okay, just a minute.
Without item three, you get to stay.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
Second. Counsel, if you would please vote to approve the consent agenda minus item three.
Can I confirm really quickly who made that motion and who seconded that motion?
I have Councilmember Troyer and Councilmember Jones.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure it was right in the.
Thank you. Counsel, please vote. Consent agenda is approved, five to nothing. All right. Councilmember Cade? Did you pull item three, Julie? There it is. Item number three, approval of the First Amendment to the Economic Development Agreement between JST Old Town LLC and the City of Lewisville, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. The city and JST Old Town LLC entered into an economic development agreement dated January 4th, 2021, to develop an urban-style multifamily development at the corner of Purnell and Mill Street. The First Amendment waives the park development fees, requires the developer to make safety improvements to an off-site generator, requires the developer to program the future pocket park located north of the developer's project, and incorporates variances to allow a reduction in parking and to allow a fence to be located within the city's 10-foot utility easement on the west side of the project. It is recommended that the city council approve the First Amendment to the Economic Development Agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And this is to adopt, or to approve the First Amendment and authorize the city manager to execute that agreement?
Yes.
Counsel, if you would please vote. Item three passes four to nothing. Thank you, Counsel. Still, still good, keep moving? Item H, regular hearings, consideration of an ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 7, Article 5, Special Events, amending Chapter 2, Article 8, Section 2-201, the fee schedule, amending Chapter 2, Article 8, Section 2-202, waiver of fees for school district, and amending Chapter 9, Article 1, Sections 9 through 1, definitions. The proposed amendment to the Special Events Ordinance clarifies the permit application process, creates and defines special event zones for the Old Town Entertainment District, Castle Hills, Music City Mall, and the Bill Weaver Arena, provides for a waiver of the special event application fee for those zones, and expands the boundaries of and reduces police and fire fees for the Old Town Entertainment District. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Chris McGinn, Director of Neighborhood and Inspection Services, is available for questions. Counsel, do we have any questions?
I just want to make one comment. I just want to make, I just want to thank staff for all the hard work for getting this done. I think this has been well needed, so appreciate that.
I appreciate the opportunity to get more organizations involved in the city. I don't want to see this create more workload for our city staff, but I do want to see more opportunities for events, so that's really well done. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve.
Second.
City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the Lewisville City Code by repealing and replacing Chapter 7, Article 5, Special Events in its entirety, amending Chapter 2, Article 8, Section 2-201, the fee schedule, by exempting special events in specified locations of the city from special event permit application fees and discounting fees related to police and fire services for special events in the Old Town Entertainment District, amending Chapter 2, Article 8, Section 2-202, waiver of fees for school district by waiving all fees related to an allowable special event, amending Chapter 9, Article 1, Section 9-1, definitions, by amending the definition of Old Town Entertainment District, providing repealer severability and effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion is approved, five to nothing. All right, Counsel, at this point, it looks like our guest is here. So we are going to go back to item C, closed section. And in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Sections 551, 071, consultation with attorney, legal issues regarding city governance and residential districts, Section 551.072, real estate property acquisition, and Section 551.087, economic development deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. And then when we're done with this, we will reconvene back to item nine. We have no action to be taken from closed session. We're going to go move back into item nine. Consideration of a variance to the 1996 Castle Hills Agreement, Section 52B, regarding street right-of-way for Castle Hills Discovery at the Realm Edition Infrastructure, located west of Castle Hills Phase 10 and south of Castle Hills Discovery at the Realm Phase 1 and 2, as requested by Land Design Incorporated, representing the property owner. The subject public road is located within Castle Hills in the City of Lewisville extraterritorial jurisdiction and is to be developed in accordance with the 1996 Bright Farms Agreement. The subject property has been preliminary platted and is currently being final platted to dedicate right-of-way to the city. The road, Lady Betty Drive, is to be constructed to serve future multifamily and single-family residential developments. No single-family homes will have driveway access to this street. A variance is being requested to allow a 41-foot street right-of-way with a 10-foot wide sidewalk and utility easement on each side in lieu of the required 50 feet right-of-way. It's recommended that the city council approve the variance requested as set forth in the caption above. And we have Mr. David Salmon, our city engineer, available for questions. If there are no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the variance requested as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve the variance request.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 10, consideration of a variance to allow an existing engineering site plan to remain active for six months for the development of a 3,000-square-foot building at 999 State Highway 121. building at 999 State Highway 121 Business as part of Magic Touch Paint and Auto Body, as requested by William Peck, William Peck and Associates Incorporated on behalf of Lone Star Magic LLC, the property owner. Approval of a special use permit and an engineering site plan was obtained in 2017 for Magic Touch Paint and Auto Body showing two new 3,000-square-foot buildings. Construction occurred on one of these buildings in 2018. However, the second 3,000-square-foot building was never built. The engineering site plan expired in 2019, 18 months after building permit issuance. The business now wants to apply for the building permit for the second building approved in the SUP and engineering site plan and is requesting a variance to Section 67-73E to allow the existing engineering site plan to remain active for six months for the purpose of constructing the second 3,000-square-foot building. The cost of preparing a new engineering site plan and the timeframe it would take would be better spent addressing remaining SUP requirements on site. It's recommended that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above with the condition that a building permit be issued within six months by which time all conditions of the SUP must be met. Available for questions is Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director. And if there are no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the variance request as set forth in the caption with the condition that a building permit be issued within six months by which time all conditions of the SUP be, must be met.
I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 11, Councilmember Cade. This one, I think you have to step away for.
Yep.
Thank you. Item 11, consideration of a variance request to allow front entry associated with the final plat of Santos Edition Lots 1 and 2, Block A, on .999 acres out of the E. Pickett survey, abstract number 1014, zoned, single-family residential R-7.5 district, located at 736 South Poitras Street, being a replat of Lot 1, Block A, Santos Edition. The request is to allow front entry on the two proposed lots fronting South Poitras Street, which currently contains all front entry lots and no alleys. The proposed subdivision divides one lot into two lots. Per Chapter 212 of the Texas Local Government Code, a public hearing is required for residential replats with associated variance requests. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on September 21st, 2021, and recommended unanimous approval six to nothing of the variance and delegated to city staff the authority to approve the final plat once remaining deficiencies are corrected. City council action is now required to formally approve the variance request. It is recommended that the city council approve the variance request as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, is available for questions. And if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the variance request as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve the variance request.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes four to nothing. We could have Councilmember Cade back. Item 12, consider an act upon adoption of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of easements for the rehabilitation and realignment of multiple sanitary sewer line crossings across Timber Creek and Fox Creek as part of the Timber Creek Utility Crossings Project Phase 2 and the undertaking of all associated public improvements, including but not limited to construction of access to and maintenance of the project across an area generally bounded by Bel Air Boulevard to the north, State Highway 121 Business to the east, Continental Drive to the south, and Creekview Drive to the west. Determining the public necessity of such acquisition, authorizing the appointment of an appraiser and negotiator as necessary, authorizing the city manager or her designee to establish just compensation for the property rights to be acquired, authorizing the city manager or her designee to take steps necessary to acquire the needed property rights and compliance with all applicable laws and resolutions, and authorizing the city attorney or her designee to institute condemnation proceedings to acquire the property if purchase negotiations are not successful, providing for repealing, savings, and severability clauses, and providing for an effective date. To construct, access, and maintain the project, easements needed to be acquired from multiple parcel owners. Staff will meet with the property owners to inform them of the pending improvements and provide a copy of the appraisal report. Property owners have previously been notified of the pending project via mailouts. As required by Texas Property Code, Section 21.0113, the city is required to first attempt to acquire the necessary acquisitions from the landowners voluntarily through the making of a bona fide offer prior to filing any eminent domain procedure. There's specific language on this one, counsel, that we have to recommend. I'm not sure if any of you received that.
I have it.
It's in the recommendation.
Okay, it's in the recommendation. Great. With that, we do have Mr. David Salmon available for questions.
I'll entertain a motion. Okay. I move that the City of Lewisville, Texas, adopt the resolution described in Agenda Item Number 12 and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire for public use the property described and depicted in Attachment 1 attached to the resolution, said description and depiction being incorporated into this motion for all purposes, for the rehabilitation and realignment of multiple sanitary sewer crossings across Timber Creek and Fox Creek as part of the Timber Creek Utility Crossings Phase 2 project and the undertaking of other associated public utility improvements, including but not limited to construction of, access to, and maintenance of that project. This vote applies to all units of property described and depicted in Attachment 1 attached to the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 13, consideration of a resolution extending the declaration of local disaster for public health emergency until 11:59 p.m. on November 1st, 2021. On February 17th, 2021, Mayor Rudy Durham, acting in accordance with authority granted to him under the City Charter and Code of Ordinances and under Section 418.108A of the Texas Government Code, declared a local state of disaster for public health emergency due to the concerns related to COVID-19, which the Lewisville City Council subsequently ratified, supported, and continued until 11:59 p.m. on October 18th, 2021. Ongoing evaluation of circumstances related to the virus and the updated recommendations of the Centers for Disease Control and the Texas Department of State Health Services indicate that the conditions necessitating the disaster declaration have and will continue to exist for a period of extending beyond October 18th, 2021. It's recommended that the city council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Reports, we'll have reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. I'm going to start with Mr. Lutke, and then when we get up here to the dais, I'm going to have Mr. Meredith be first this time around, just because I've decided to be different today.
I do want to remind the council that the Texas chapter of the American Planning Association Conference is coming up in a couple of weeks, November 2nd and 3rd, and I will be emailing out information to those of you who have, will be attending in person, and then I believe some of you have elected for the virtual option, so I'll be giving you information here the next coming few days on that conference. Thank you.
No report, Mayor.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor, as you saw firsthand on Friday afternoon, the lake level is at 520.85, just a little over a foot below the, the normal pool level.
I've got some activities for the library of the week of October 18th. GED class for adults, Wednesday, October 20th, from 5:30 to 7:30. Registration is required and will be at the computer lab. Financial Planning Series Credit Score, Tuesday, October 19th, 6:30 to 7:30. No registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. Afternoon hangout for teens age 13 to 18, Tuesday, October 19th, 3:45 to 5:15. No registration required at the Teen Point area. And tween scene for children ages 9 to 12, Wednesday, October 20th, 4:30 to 5:30. A ticket is required, although it is free, at the Bennett Program Room.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Troyer?
I guess it's me.
Yes, please, sir.
I have several things from the Grand Theater. First of all, performances, the Black Box Songwriting Challenge will be taking place on October 22nd. This is presented by the City of Lewisville, and the theme for this challenge is "Superstitious." So, that should be an interesting, interesting performance, interesting performances, as always. The rocker, the Rocky Horror Picture Show will be screened on October 29th, again presented by the City of Lewisville. And as far as art exhibitions, we have Western Roundup, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, which continues through October 23rd. And the opening reception for Day of the Dead and Call of Wild Exhibitions will be on October 30th, again presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. And that exhibition runs from October 30th to November, November 27th. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Green?
I just wanted to remind everybody that early voting started today. The city has a proposition. I believe the state has a few as well. So, I think the, the two most convenient local places for our Denton County voters are going to be the Municipal Annex and Thrive. So, the, and the early voting goes from now until October 29th, so be sure to get out and vote. Then I also just wanted to remind everyone that the, the annual online survey for the residents, satisfaction survey has been posted. I did it today. So, I think it's a valuable way for us to gauge how we're doing with the decisions that we're making. So, I would encourage as many people as possible to go take the survey.
Okay. Just want to let everybody know that the city is accepting student entries for the Color Palooza Logo Design Contest. You can go to the website and, and sign up for that and give us a new logo. A logo is always interesting every year. And speaking of since students, we're talking about students, let's talk about our Lewisville High School that's having homecoming this weekend. The homecoming parade is this Wednesday. I'm sorry, our undefeated farm.
Undefeated, 44, 15.
That should be a lot of fun this week.
Yeah, this is going to be a big game, too.
Plenty candy Wednesday on the mayor.
Councilmember Cade?
Everybody's already mentioned what I.
Okay. All right. Well, if you come back with something.
Go farmers!
I wanted to thank staff and Cloud Nine Charities for a, once again, an outstanding brew fest that we were able to have here in Old Town, Lewisville this past Saturday. It was a great time, safe time, and everybody had, had fun, so couldn't have asked for better weather. Also on Saturday, I noticed that we didn't have any conversation between our two chiefs, but I believe we had a battle of the badges. Do either one of, one of the chiefs want to talk a little bit about that, how that, how that event ended up?
Chief Deaver can talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, because they, they won last year, right? The police department.
I don't know that they've won. I don't ever remember them winning.
No?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up.
We do, we actually let them win every now and then, just so they keep coming.
But yeah, we did have the tournament this weekend for a good charity, the, the LCP AAA. Outstanding time by Had All, and, or Had By All, and he won the game.
The what won the game? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Fire department.
Hey, but Chief Deaver did get to fly a helicopter.
Yeah, both, both of our chiefs flew the helicopters in, and I expect to see a really large drone request at the next budget. But, but no, it was, it was a lot of fun. Of course, it raises funds for, for our Police Volunteer Association, and our fire team was out there. And of course, we had other cities that had grudge matches as well, so it was a lot of fun to have some of our surrounding cities participate in, in the overall tournament. So, thanks so much for a great Saturday. Think that's it for events right now. Of course, Halloween and all that other good stuff is coming up, but if you have any questions or concerns, you can always reach out to your council and your staff. So, I want to thank you all for all the hard work. And with that, we do not have any more closed sessions, so I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.
Do we need a motion?
Oh, that, we need a motion for that, don't we?
So moved.
I'm moving too fast. I need a motion. I need to entertain a motion for that. I got.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I got Councilmember Green clicking the button first.
I didn't click the button.
I clicked it for her, and then someone else.
Okay. So, I got, I got Councilmember Cade with a second, my Councilmember Meredith. All those in favor, vote.
Aye.
Oh, yay.
I can't. You're gonna have to.
Sharon, you blocked us out?
Are you?
All right. We're out of here. Five to nothing. Have a good evening.
I love you all so much. I wanted to stay.
That is 8:30. What is that, 8:36?